Turn it on. I call the order, the April twelfth, twenty twenty-one Henderson County Board of Public Education Board Meeting. Would everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You all may be seated. Welcome to our April edition of our board meeting, and we have some extra folks with us. How exciting is this to actually have people able to join us in our board meetings? Um, we're getting closer to closer than normal. Uh, first up today is going to be our agenda approval. I'll take a motion when someone's ready. Anyone?
I move, we approve the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. Recognitions, Dr. John Bryant. Welcome, sir.
Thank you so much, Mr. Craven, members of the board. It is a real pleasure to have the opportunity to perform some recognitions today at our April Board Meeting. And we're all familiar with the expression, it takes a village to raise a child, but one of the things that I think we can never forget is the extraordinary community that it takes to make that village run well. And today's recognitions are really about that opportunity. As our schools are safely operating today, it is possible, because of the partners that we're going to be recognizing here today, the vaccination effort of our staff enabled us to serve our children the way that we are on a daily basis right now. And that would not be possible without the representatives from the organizations that are here today. And so Mr. Taylor's going to share with you a little bit about that. But we felt like it was critically important today to recognize their investment and continued support of the school system so that we could celebrate them today and just say thank you, because those words don't feel like they carry enough weight right now. In times like these, thank you cannot be said too often. And so we are so grateful that they're here with us today. I'm going to let Mr. Taylor share with you a little bit about that appreciation.
Yes, good afternoon, board members. Uh, this journey started back in January, and at that time, uh, both Blue Ridge Health and Part D reached out to us and not only gave us advice on how to proceed in this effort to vaccinate our staff, but also expressing a desire to be partners with Henderson County Public Schools. Uh, and so those were words in January, uh, but those words became actions in February. Uh, once the governor announced that we were eligible or would become eligible to receive the vaccine at the end of February, uh, both Blue Ridge Health and Part D again reached out to us saying, we're ready to step in and provide these vaccines to your employees. Uh, and so, uh, today we have three representatives, one from Blue Ridge Health and two from Part D. And these are the individuals that I worked very closely with, Mr. Rhodes and Molly McGowan Gorsuch worked very closely with in the effort to get our staff, uh, members vaccinated in February and March. And so today we have, uh, these recognitions to give to them, uh, to Part D, UNC Healthcare, and to Blue Ridge Health. Uh, these awards say with profound gratitude and appreciation for your unwavering investment, support, and care of Henderson County Public Schools, staff, and school communities. And so at this time, I would like to ask Amy Treese and Doc Durham to come forward, uh, to receive their recognition. And for Blue Ridge Health, we have Tammy Greenwell here.
I'd really like to say thank you to both you, both your organizations. You guys have made it possible for us to get our teachers back in and, and uh, bring confidence to our schools and, and get our kids back where they need to be is in the classroom and without the partnership with you guys, uh, we couldn't have, we couldn't have done it. And the efficiency with what you guys did, it was amazing. So, um, I, I, from the bottom of my heart, I truly thank you. Thank you, guys.
I, I want to share just one thing with you, um, really quickly. This is from one of our teachers. Um, and, you know, who were scared to be with, in the buildings, you know, unprotected before. And um, one of the things she said is, um, and this is high school. Um, we're hearing laughter, having great class discussions, drawing with chalk on sidewalks during lunch, reading actual paper and pencil, woohoo, and simply feeling like a real teacher and student again. So your organizations just a thousand times, thank you, thank you. You brought that back and, uh, we are most appreciative.
Thank you, guys.
It was me and the efforts, the joint efforts. Obviously, I have a personal passion for the system. Uh, but be able to be part of that, I can speak for it. Honored. And it was a great day. It was a
Yes.
The channels of history, our school system, we've been talking about it here.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we're winning this war. We're winning it one stick at a time. We're winning.
Yep.
Getting ready to hit on the other side. So
Yes, sir.
Ever to persevere, we'll get there.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
I've never seen so many people smile to take a shot in my life.
Yes, I know.
I was filing given.
Yeah.
Yep, I, he's
He does school system as well, and particularly Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
When all of this started, we were like, we need a drive through vaccination site. North Henderson and Apple Valley would be great. And
Yep.
So you guys have been amazing, accommodating us, letting us contest these. So we feel like it is a true partnership.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Have a great afternoon. Thank you. Alright, next up is going to be board chair observations. Other than what we've just discussed, I, I, I don't really have any. I'm just thrilled that we're able to have the vast majority of our kids back in school and folks who are vaccinated and seemingly like we're on the other side. We've got Friday night football and, um, hopefully next we've got graduation coming up and, um, and I'm thrilled, I'm absolutely thrilled to get on to normal school stuff. So, um, that's going to be all for me. Uh, board member observations, anyone?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Carl Taylor and all his efforts in getting us back into schools to visit and tour. Uh, the tours that, the ones that we've been to lately have just been outstanding.
Mm-huh.
Hendersonville is really going to be something when they get in that building. I was quite impressed with the work that's been done there and, uh, and, uh, also at rugby, the, every student that I talked to at rugby were just thrilled to be back. Nothing but smiles on their faces. Thank you, Carl. Mr. Taylor.
Okay, anyone else?
I have an additional something about, um, going into Hendersonville High. I don't know if it was shared with, with everybody. I was by myself when I toured with, uh, um, the gentleman that took, uh, me around and they shared, did they share the J hooks for the data with you guys? That's, that saved, that alone saved like two hundred thousand dollars. Um, and then being able to see the color-coded, um, conduit, is that what it was? Yeah.
Yep.
Color-coded, like that was, that's not been done yet here, and that was super cool. And so it's been, um, Vinoy's been a great partner to work with. And, um, of course, you know, David Berry and the, the county, they always do us right and do a great job. So, yeah, that was, that was very exciting to see and see the behind the, you know,
Yeah.
behind the walls, what's happening.
No, it's going to be awesome.
Yeah.
Did we ever
Mr. Ego.
talk about the National Board's cer- certification winners for the teachers? Did we talk, talk about that last meeting?
Yes.
Okay, good. Just wanted to make sure. I was going to bring that up again, but I'm glad we discussed it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alright, we'll move on to consent agenda. We have two resolutions in the consent agenda, and I'll pull those out. Uh, but first I'll take a motion to approve that consent agenda.
I move, we approve the consent agenda as presented. I second.
Second, Mr. Egoth. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Who would like to read the Teacher Appreciation Week? Ms. Case, please.
Uh, resolution honoring the observance of Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week, May third through seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Whereas a strong, effective system of free public school education for all children is essential to our democratic system of government. And whereas Henderson County Public Schools is known as an outstanding school system with an effective, caring staff. And whereas all Henderson County Public School employees are members of a family working together to provide the best education possible for children. And whereas we constantly seek to provide our students with the latest advances in curriculum and technology, realizing that their futures are greatly determined by the quality of education they receive. And whereas teachers not only teach, but also serve as counselors, mentors, motivators, nurses, and role models. And whereas teachers are able to perform their duties more effectively and successfully because of the support and dedication of all staff members. And whereas it is appropriate that teachers and all staff be recognized for their dedication and commitment to the education of our students. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Henderson County Board of Public Education that May third through seventh, two thousand and twenty-one shall be observed by Henderson County Public Schools as Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week, adopted this twelfth day of April, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you very much, Ms. Case. Next, we have the School Library Month Resolution. Uh, would anybody like to read that, please?
I can read it.
Thank you.
Resolution honoring the observance of School Library Month, April, twenty twenty-one. Whereas April, twenty twenty-one has been designated the thirty-sixth Annual National School Library Month by the American Soci- Association of School Librarians. Whereas a school library is to ensure that the students and staff are effective users of ideas and information. And whereas school libraries provide materials that will develop lit- where did I go? Where, well, sorry, will develop literary, cultural, and aesthetic appreciation as well as ethic, ethical standards. And whereas the school libraries provide materials to meet individual needs, varied interests and abilities, socio-economic backgrounds, and maturity levels of the students served. And whereas school librarians provide the leadership and expertise necessary to ensure that the school library is an integral part of a school's instructional program. And whereas school librarians serve students by teaching the skills of locating and using information through traditional resources and new technologies, providing literature appreciation activities, and guiding and encouraging content and recreational reading. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Henderson County Board of Public Education that the April, twenty twenty-one shall be observed by the Henderson County Public Schools as School Library Month, adopted this twelfth day of April, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you very much. Uh, before we go on to old business, I, I just realized, or was reminded that I skipped over public comments, and I apologize. Um, we have no, no one here to actually give us public comment, but we did receive one uh, via email, and I believe that was in regard to the school calendar. Uh, that was the only public count, uh, comment that we've received, um, this month. So on to old business, we have none, so we'll go on to new business, and that's going to be the summer school plan. Dr. Wendy Frye. Welcome.
Good afternoon, board members. All schools offering a summer program must have a written summer plan for the twenty twenty-one school year that has been signed and approved by our local board and submitted to our Regional Accountability Coordinator by April first, twenty twenty-one. However, for this year, we did receive a one-month extension, and that's why I'm coming to you at this meeting. Our summer instructional programs' purpose is to provide, um, additional academic instruction and second chance assessments on eligible state EOGs and EOCs for our students. Also, a fall and spring semester EOC students who are unable to be administered their EOC assessments during the fall or spring semesters due to COVID restrictions are also allowed to take these first administrations during the summer program. And, um, as we have mentioned previously to you, we are actively planning a robust summer program that aligns with House Bill eighty-two that was just passed, uh, last week. And I hope to be able to share more of those details with you at our May meeting.
Okay. So this just allows us just essentially that we're going to do summer school from June tenth to July eleventh and July sixth to July twentieth, correct?
Correct.
And then what about four-year year round?
For year round, theirs will be a reduced program, um, due to their earlier start date. Yes.
And that's just third, fourth, and fifth grade for those elementary schools?
Yes. Um, our summer school program though will be, um, for all students, though.
Okay.
It'll be a K twelve program. Was that what you're asking?
Yeah, well, I was just looking on the application. It just says third, fourth, you know.
Yes, this is because those are the EOG, um, grades. Yes, this is that, um, standard form that we bring to you each year for approval that goes to the Regional Accountability Office. But then our summer program, which will align with House Bill eighty-two, will, will be, uh, much larger and more encompassing than this.
Have you started recruiting teachers for summer school teaching?
Yes, ma'am, we have. We have. We are actively asking our, um, teachers to consider teaching for us in summer school and, and also investigating, um, the options that we have, um, for incentivizing their participation.
Do we know how many students maybe? I mean, not, not yet, but
I really don't have a number for you at this time. I do know that we'll need to have a number by the end of this month. Um, we need to submit our plan to the state, but also internally and locally for our technology staff to know the students', um, names who may be participating, because we will, um, thank goodness, uh, Mr. Fender and his staff will make those students a priority in replacing their Chromebooks.
That's awesome. So is that number just, um, school-driven, or can parents opt in even if the school has not identified?
Great question. So the way the bill reads is that, um, schools will first identify and invite at-risk students. And then if capacity allows, then parents may request that their students attend. Yes.
That's great. Thank you.
Yes, sure. Good question.
Any other questions for Dr. Frye? Oh, thank you. Um, next is a sole source vendor?
Yeah.
I think we need a motion.
Oh, need a motion? Sorry.
Yes, please.
Goodness gracious. It's been spring break, right?
I was rolling on too.
I know, I was there, just clicking, just clicking. I'll take a motion.
I do. I moved that the Henderson County Board of Education approved the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one summer program plan.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Sole source vendor.
Yes. So we are now seeking your approval to exceed the UG federal guidelines, which mandate a ten thousand dollar limitation for an instructional purpose purchase. This request is for Wilson Language and is requested on behalf of Immaculata Private School. Um, Immaculata partners with us to receive Title One services, and we serve as their fiscal agent for those funds to support, uh, their instructional program funded through Title One. And they're looking to implement this Wilson Language Fundations Phonics Program, as well as the book collection that supports the program. And the total cost will be paid from funds allocated for use in the Immaculata program, Title One funds totaling just over nineteen thousand dollars. We have already requested and received NCDPI's approval and are prepared to purchase pending your approval. And we also have a sole source letter from Wilson Language, uh, meaning we will not have to bid out this purchase.
Is that going to all of our elementary, uh, Title One schools?
This is for Immaculata. We serve as the fiscal agent for their Title One funds, and this is a request from Immaculata.
Why are we their fiscal agent?
This is something that, that, and, and correct me if I say anything wrong. Yes, we're required, um, to be the pastor and fiscal agent for, um, privates, yeah, who can participate in Title One funding. Anything else you'd add?
We have to do what's called equitable services, so we have to actually do the purchasing and then provide the materials.
So we have to spend money on our, um, personnel to fulfill their requests?
Yes. We do, but it is money specifically allocated for private students by federal law. You're doing what every other public school district in the nation is doing.
I know. I'm complaining about it.
But you said equitable service. Do we have something like that?
Did you say that again?
That
You said something about equitable service, correct?
It's what?
It's equitable services is the title of the provision for funding of private schools from the Title One and from COVID relief. And in the new round of COVID relief funds, the money will be distributed directly to private schools. We will not serve as fiscal agent for this next round of COVID stimulus money. It was, uh, we had some discussions about it. There was a lot of confusion, uh, between the federal law and the executive branch, but what was clear in the first round of COVID relief funds is that we do have a minimum amount that we have to allocate to private schools. That's always been the case with Title One, so this is not something new. It's just you're going to go out and actually purchase this program. One of the ways we can satisfy it is by using school district personnel. But again, this is something you've been doing for years, and it's required by federal law.
They're our largest participating private school in Title One and received about forty-two thousand dollars this year.
Is this a program we have ever looked into?
Um, it is not a program that we have used. It's something they're very interested in, but, but our, um, elementary schools have not requested it, no.
We, we've looked into it before. Okay. And it was not something that suited us? Um, we felt at that time it was not, but that's been seven years ago, probably.
Glad you remembered.
So how, how do they have to qualify for Title One the same way we do? Like by filling out?
They do.
Yes, they do. They have to have a certain percentage of students that meet the Title One requirements, and then the money is actually allocated toward those that participate. Uh, it's a percentage basis, but yes, they have to be able to qualify. Many private schools do not qualify for any funding at all.
This doesn't make it harder for our public schools to apply for Title One?
Mm-mm.
No.
In no way, shape, or form.
No.
The percentage of, you are, you are pretty much pass-through for the private schools in the federal legislature. Like I said, now, the federal government has now decided to make these grants directly. But you won't even see this money in the future, is the better way to think about it. This was never your money to begin with.
Right.
You're not even going to see it in the future. You were just serving as
And as long as it doesn't hurt us.
But that's
It does not.
That was going to be my question. What, is there any type of liability that's associated with, you know, sole source vendors are, you know, we, we approve these because there's nobody else that can give, you know, them what they, what this company can, right? Is there any liability associated with that, since we have to vote on that?
I haven't reviewed the specifics of this particular contract, but it sounds like DPI has approved it.
We already have the approval from DPI, yes.
So it's on DPI?
No, I, I would just really like it that we, if we're not the pass-through. Like, if you want to give them the money for Title One stuff, give, give them the money. Um, why do we have to use Bernie and, and his folks to be able to do that? And then have Wendy draft this, and then Dr. Frye, excuse me, and then, you know, bring this to us, and then we've got to approve it. And then, it's just dumb. Rubbing it in our face. Yeah. I'll take a motion.
I move that the Henderson County Board of Public Education approve Wilson Language as a vendor under the sole source exemption guidelines.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Bernie Socia, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two audit contract. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon.
How are you?
I'm doing well, thank you. Hope you guys are doing well.
You are.
Um, couple items here for approval today. The, the first one being the audit contract. You got to talk with Mr. Anderson last month. This is a contract to have Carlin Anderson serve as the audit firm for us for the current fiscal year that we're in that ends this June thirtieth. Um, same thirty thousand dollar price that it has been. Um, as long as I've been here, and this is, even though it's only thirty thousand dollars, needs your approval to be compliant with the board policy.
Any questions on this? I think Carlin and Anderson do a phenomenal job. Um, you guys saw last month or whenever it was, how much work they put into it. They're in our schools for weeks at a time, and thirty thousand dollars seems like a pretty good deal to me for, for those services.
It is, absolutely.
If there's no questions, I'll take a motion. Anybody?
Move the Henderson County Board of Public Education approve the contract to audit accounts between Henderson County Board of Public Education and Carlin and Anderson Incorporated for the period beginning July first, twenty twenty, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, sir.
Alright, and, and I'm not going anywhere.
Oh, yes. Oh, this is the fun one, the North Carolina lottery application.
Can I play Mary Louise Corn?
Please do.
Please do. This is the Lottery application, three hundred thirty-eight thousand, one hundred thirty-seven dollars and nine cents, as shown in the last document, is the available amount of money to draw down for lottery funds currently. That is for Hillendale and Mills River School debt service from a bond that was done during the construction.
Ten years ago, right?
Yes, it was, yeah, two thousand eight was the, um, when it was done. They didn't start paying on it, I believe, until the beginning of two thousand ten.
How, how much longer do you have on it?
I haven't heard back. I've requested that information. I still see it. Looks like there's a couple more years when I try and track through in their budget documents. Um, it's still on its own until it gets wrapped up into some other refunding.
Yep.
And then it can get lost very quickly.
Yep. Um, well, I think that'd be pertinent information to have sooner rather than later, um, if we can somehow get that. Anybody have questions on this?
So when people pay the lottery, we directly get all the funds from that, right? Like everything?
All of it.
Yeah.
We get slightly less than half of the proceeds.
The net proceeds.
Of the, yes.
Yeah.
Yes. After all, after everything's been paid for.
What does the legislature do with the rest, do you know?
Uh, they have multiple projects that it, uh, is assigned to.
And it still says education lottery on the
It says education lottery. Some of it replaced other funding that we used to get. Fifteen years ago, we used to get a different source of funds. Lottery came along and they
Just planted those funds.
They did.
Yep.
One went away and never came back.
Interesting. Alright, I'll take a motion.
I move the Henderson County Board of Education approve the public school buildings' capital fund, North Carolina Education Lottery application.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, thank you, sir.
See you later.
Alright, uh, COVID reserve funds, Dr. Bryant?
Mr. Socia will be back later.
Yes, sir.
He wanted to present three times this time, so
Absolutely.
He's going to win that trophy. Uh, the COVID reserve funds, if I could take just a moment, it came to a brief history to the board as it relates to these particular funds. When the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one local current expense budget was approved by the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners, it included four hundred thousand dollars of undesignated funds that were reserved for school system needs and priorities as it related to our response to the pandemic. And again, to the immense credit of this board, uh, to our previous superintendent and to the investment by the Board of Commissioners, uh, those funds have been remained available to this board as it relates to anticipating what those needs and concerns might be. To date, this board has designated eighty-five thousand dollars of those funds to cover the projected costs of middle and high school officials, uh, that were, would potentially be a loss to our athletic programs across our schools. And again, those funds have not yet been dispersed. We've been tracking the number of contests
And again, those funds have not yet been dispersed. We've been tracking the number of contests and how that is working. And so as we approach the end of the fiscal year, those dollars have been held in reserve, eighty-five thousand of the four hundred thousand. Given our current capacity restrictions under the executive order that's been issued by the governor's office, we are planning end of year activities, graduations, award ceremonies, honor programs, and otherwise for in-person attendance by our students, uh, by our families and by our school system, uh, personnel. But that requires different logistical support than we have had historically. And as you take a look here, what's being presented to you today are two specific requests as it relates to those COVID reserve funds. In the center section of this particular document, we're asking for a consideration of a reservation of seventy-three thousand dollars for school level reimbursements for those end of year activities. So when you think about a high school graduation that would be occurring inside one of our stadiums, in order to properly distance, in order to create space and support materials, that costs money. Whether you're reserving chairs or tents or the material that's necessary to ensure that those activities can come. And during this pandemic period, we have, we have put really strict restrictions on fundraising activities at the school level. And with that in mind, we're asking the board to consider making our schools whole so that those costs are not out of pocket. Specific to our high schools, we've estimated seventy-five hundred dollars for each of our four traditional high schools. For the Career Academy and the Early College, five thousand dollars for end of year activities. For each middle school, three thousand dollars, and all thirteen of our elementary schools, two thousand dollars. Again, the purpose of these dollars is to reimburse schools for the costs of end of year activities, programs, graduations, uh, material events and otherwise. And again, it allows our schools not to carry the burden of trying to create opportunities for their students and for their families. And specifically, again, we want to create as much of an end of year activity experience for every child as possible. We certainly believe that our school communities deserve that as we move forward. And of course, in our return to learn presentation, I'm going to be talking a little bit more about what end of year activities might look like. But we do know this, in order to do them differently than we've ever done them before, they cost money. And our schools have not been able to raise funds the way they traditionally would in this period of time. And so we feel like this is a very appropriate use. If I might, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll pause at this section before I go into section three and answer any questions that the board might have about this particular section. Any questions from the board?
No, I think it's great. I mean, normally we'd, we'd get a big group of people together and have the top scholars and the CTE and everything and bring everybody together and we have a great sponsor, whether that's Advent or Party or whoever that can, that can help us with that. Um, it's a little bit different when you have to do it everywhere else.
Yes, sir.
And so let's give them as much of a normal experience as possible. And if it costs us seventy-three grand, well, that's why we put this money back.
Yes, sir. And I appreciate you mentioning top scholars. That's a perfect example. Normally that is a singular event held at Blue Ridge Community College and their TED Center where we honor the top fifteen students uh, from each of our traditional high schools. And we're all there together with their families and the board and the community and the administration. And of course, the TED Center right now is a vaccination site. It is not available. And we couldn't bring that many people together in one space. So we're actually having our top scholars dinners separately by all of those different sites. And so that cost is now fourfold across the board when you think about it being in different places and divided up in that way. And just recognizing our kids, they certainly deserve it. I appreciate you bringing up that example.
So you're saying the board is asked to consider reserving seventy-three thousand for hot, school level reimbursement? So this money has already been spent?
No, sir. No, sir. What we would be doing is with the board's approval, we would say to each school, you have high school seventy-five hundred dollars to spend that we will make you whole at the end of the year when you hand us the receipts, uh, that you have paid toward end of year activities. So none of the money has been spent.
And how do we know how much, why not eight? Why not seven?
We estimated years past as it relates to the various events that are going on and what the estimated costs might be, as well as we provided, uh, Mr. Egoff and members of the board, an entire document to our school administrators about what kind of activities are permissible, what type can occur based on traditional events. And so we looked at all the different events that are allowable, how we might plan those events and what kind of costs would be associated with them. And then we vetted those with our principal groups in terms of making sure that those would cover traditional costs.
What happens?
Does it include athletics?
No, sir. This is not athletic related at all. So you're talking about award ceremonies, honor ceremonies, graduation events, end of year activities, picnic celebrations, that type of work.
I think by doing it this way too, we're going to see equity at each of the schools where at one school, i- if they didn't have the funding, they might have a lesser type of ceremony.
Yes, ma'am.
That's why we make sure that every student is celebrated at each of the schools equally, which is nice.
Most certainly. I think that's a great point. Um, when we talk about equitably dispersing those dollars, it's not based on the fundraising efforts of your community. Yes, ma'am.
What happens if the governor comes out and says different things are okay, are less restrictive?
Yes, sir. So kind of our end of year planning is all contingent on the current executive orders and the restrictions. So our activities are always going to be based within that framework. So as we talk about capacity, and I'll talk about that a little bit later, right now capacity is fifty percent. So that's the capacity, uh, for in-person events based on the fire code of that particular area. If that were to become seventy-five percent or a hundred percent, then we'd plan accordingly. But what we know, and I'll use top scholars as an example, is we're having a plan for that right now. That has to be planned for right now, and the space that we would traditionally use in our community is not available for it. We wouldn't be able to have that event anywhere, uh, based on the number of people that were. And so the, the need to go ahead and have that planned and prepared for is upon us right now. Other questions about that section? The third section is specific to this space, and you might take a moment to look around. We've had some discussions about how, uh, unique this space is, uh, but also how necessary we have learned this space to be in the COVID era. When we think about participation among our community members remotely, as they, many of them might be doing right now, and as thousands of people have done since January of twenty twenty, uh, this space has been ill-equipped to be able to be utilized uh, very flexibly and very efficiently. I have to give, uh, Mr. Fender and his team tremendous credit for what they accomplish on a daily basis, uh, in this space right now. But when we think about this particular space, we learned a great deal about how the boardroom can function, not just for board meetings specifically, but as a professional learning space that serves the entire school system, opportunities for that. We had some discussions and Mr. Fender and his team presented at one time the options as it relates to technological upgrades, the camera systems, the ability for the public to interact with what's being presented. But one of the critical pieces of that is designating dollars that it create a budget figure for us to work within that space. And so what's being asked for consideration here is the need to invest in infrastructure and equipment to support the current and the future use, much in the way that we've learned about this boardroom space. So this particular budget figure at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars would include technological upgrades to this space, physical renovations. It would allow for, again, greater engagement virtually or in person and district-wide professional development for this specific space. We understand that, uh, while this space functions on the second Monday of each night in the way that you see it right now, it can also be a space that's regularly utilized across the board by our school system and in the future. And so we ask that you, again, think about reserving a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for, uh, projected equipment, infrastructure and physical renovations. Should the board approve that, uh, this evening, we of course would come back to you with what that would look like. We'd share more with you about what our plans are and our designs for. But you can think about significantly upgrading this space in order that would be more flexibly used uh, for board needs, board functions and community functions. Be glad to answer any questions that you might have about that.
Uh, I think that's much needed. I've been coming to meetings here for twenty years, I guess, and it looks the same as it did that day that I first came.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So am I correct in that we would, uh, retrofit this space so that we could have it available for professional development for our staff and, okay?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
I'm all for that.
When we think about how we have high needs for professional training spaces where we can have larger groups of people, when we can potentially utilize this space, if it has the right infrastructure, which we plan for, that we would be able to project that virtually across the entire school system and we could do it in a way that was of high quality and high caliber. That's certainly what we're thinking, Dr. Reviss.
Aye.
Yes, ma'am.
Questions?
The last but not least, I would note there at the bottom, uh, should you approve both these recommendations, it's important that the board understand you still would have a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars that would remain in that reserve fund for an undesignated future use as the board desires.
Um, I've got one comment.
Yes, sir.
Um, and maybe Mr. Rhodes could answer this, will, tell me a little bit about this. I know that the North Carolina High School Athletic Association has mentioned, uh, going into their pot of endowed funds to help with, uh, the referee costs and things of that nature. So that eighty-five thousand dollars that we reserve to offset projected cost for official, officials, hopefully we don't have to even dip into it. I'm not sure. Have you heard anything else about what they're talking about giving us or anything yet?
Would you like to speak to the numbers that have been, um, submitted by the High School Athletic Association?
Yeah, but those numbers have been in the approximate range of about five thousand dollars per school.
Five thousand per school.
And that's just our high schools. That doesn't.
The no middle schools, that doesn't cover.
So we've received about twenty.
Take four games.
Right, about twenty thousand dollars total from the High School Athletic Association's endowment fund to offset any operational costs. And as you can see, um, uh, that, that is, um, a quarter, if you will, of what we know just having officials at games costs us in order that our student athletes could compete.
Yeah, I mean, our schools aren't going to be made whole on, on what they lost on revenue as far as the gate goes. But making sure that they don't go into debt because of something that we can handle, North Carolina High School Athletic Association handles, is good. But, um, I like your requests. Um, there's, you know.
So is eighty-five what, what we need or is sixty-five what we need or is one oh five what we need?
So we'll share that with you at year end because again, we're tracking the total number of events that actually were held, right? So the number of officials there. What we did, Mr. Rhodes brought to you that eighty-five thousand dollars before the athletic seasons began as an estimate based on the schedules that were presented by the High School Athletic Association and then all of our programs, middle school and high school. So we wanted to make sure that we had a reserve for the maximum possible cost that that would be. The board can consider what that final number is, Mr. Egoff, when you take into consideration the High School Athletic Association has given five thousand dollars approximately to each of our four high schools. So when you look at that, um, you can consider what the total amount is, um, at the end of the year. So we'll be bringing that to you in June.
So we might not need the whole eighty-five?
Potentially.
Well, then there was some, you know, I mean, several schools had to go on pause for a while for whatever, so they didn't play games for a week or two. And so i- it's going to be different, but, um, yeah, that was supposedly the max amount.
Right. I think the thing that we understand is exactly as Mr. Craven said, what we don't want to do is have any school, school sit, operate in the hole. And unfortunately, there are far greater costs than just officials, right? Just the general operations of the program, the investments in the program. Um, we could, uh, present to you significant numbers that would talk about what it takes to operate an athletic program. And eighty-five thousand and twenty thou, twenty thousand from the High School Athletic Association don't cover it, all right? Uh, at, at any stretch. So my hope would be that we would be able to hold those reserves fund and make that as whole as possible for our school system. But we'll see where we stand at the end of the year.
I just want to say, you know, I want the general public that's listening and if anything comes out in the news or newspaper or whatever, that we are all looking at the monies and we're not, you know, we're asking for eighty-five. We know we're not going to probably hopefully need eighty-five, but we're, we're all looking at the dollars. And I want everybody to know that we're not just blowing through money. We're, we're spending it wisely.
Yes, sir, and trying to make sure that we don't defer any expenses to our schools.
Yep.
Right.
With that, I will take a motion if someone's ready.
I move that the Henderson County Board of Public Education approve the allocation of the COVID reserve funds as presented.
Becca.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you so very much.
Yep.
Now we will move to return to learn with your permission, Mr. Craven.
Sure.
Absolutely. So return to learn is an opportunity for us to, again, revisit same data points that we've been sharing with you, each opportunity that we've had to meet as a board, uh, and as a school system, in specific to where we stand today. Make sure, oops, it helps if I turn it on. We've been looking at our local health information as one of the data points. It's critical to understanding what community health looks like in Henderson County throughout this period. And again, you'll see the chart, just to remind everybody, this is each Monday, each Monday since we began to meet. And April fifth was the last Monday of data that was available to us. You can see that the seven-day rolling average was at nine point five or averaged up to ten right now. If you were to look at that data point today, the last available date was April the tenth or Saturday, and that information is at fourteen point five today. So it's ticked up a little bit more, but we've seen a steady decline over a period of time. And again, that is a very positive trend data for our community. Specific to the county alert system since January, again, we're reporting the county alert system. This is published every two weeks by North Carolina DHHS. So you'll see January twenty-first here when we were still in the critical stages, February fourth as things started to improve. Then you'll see February twenty-second, you'll see March the fourth specifically. And then our most recent data, March the eighteenth, and now data in April first. I'll note again, Henderson County's line, we are in that moderate to light yellow and the fourteen-day positive percent rate is four point nine percent. So again, stabilized community health, and that's been critically important for our school system and our community operations. Our current operations are those that you're familiar with. When Senate Bill twenty, two twenty, excuse me, or, uh, two hundred twenty gave us the ability to operate under Plan A, this board chose that opportunity and we've moved to Plan A in kindergarten through grade five in February, and then in March, grade six through twelve. That has been our continued operation and our operation up until this point. We remind the board and the general public that under these guidelines, we are continued to be required to offer a remote option to students and families who so choose. And that remote option has remained for families, again, at the discretion of the parent and guardian. Our instructional service delivery looks a little bit like the chart that you see in the front. We shared this with you in a late March, but I think it's helpful for everybody to be reminded that the face-to-face percentages and remote percentages per school population are a little bit different. They vary across our community, but approximately eighty percent of our student population is attending face-to-face. That's five days a week for full school days, uh, as are offered to them. And then our remote population is still hovering about twenty percent. Again, I would note that you can take some time to look at how this varies across our school system by percent. It is important to know that these, uh, numbers do change over time, so we see them, uh, fluctuate and we're glad to share more data with you on that, on that fact, if you'd like information about that. Senate Bill two twenty also requires, uh, that school systems who operate under Plan A partner with the ABC Science Collaborative. And that is a school of medicine with Duke University, which in essence allows them to collect information, track information, and then share information about the safe operations of school under Plan A. And so we have signed an agreement to share data. Again, it's not personally identifiable data. It's collaborative data and it ultimately is cumulative data. So when you think about our district dashboard and how that relates to positive school affected cases among students and staff, we're sharing that information with the collaborative so that they can understand what community impact looks like while schools are operating under Plan A. For school and community safety, again, we, we celebrated the vaccination effort at the very beginning of this meeting and our recognition, thanking the leadership from party UNC Health and Blue Ridge Health for their investment in our school system and helping to create a safe environment for our adults. But school and community safety is one of those critical elements of how we operate moving forward. And one of those pieces is specific to this, is that school systems have the flexibility to continue to navigate operational implementation, just as we've been doing during this period of time. Paying attention to what's working and what's not working and making sure that we have plans in place for each of the scenarios that might be necessary. It's our hope and it's our intention to continue to operate under Plan A. But as we've talked about, there are instances in which we might have to quarantine classrooms, students, entire school environments or otherwise, and that we're prepared to do so. We've continued to publish information on our district dashboard that's readily available to our public. We share that information on the business day following each, uh, school day. It is helpful to note that we paused that over spring break because of course, uh, students were not in school during that period of time, but that was picked back up today. We are still communicating with our school communities as it relates to COVID cases in school affected environments. And I like to remind everybody what school affected means because that is someone who is attending or present in a face-to-face environment. So if a remote-only student or teacher were to test positive in our community, that is not a school affected case. It does not show up on our dashboard. You don't get a phone call about that. The phone calls that we make are the ones that are associated with school affected cases. The local authority piece is one that we've shared with you each and every time. And again, that is local boards, each of you and collectively have the authority to make day-to-day decisions as it relates to the school system. And one of the things that we've promised to this board is to keep you informed when we have to make a change. We've not had to do so since December. That was the last day-to-day decision that we had to make uh, based on school operations, workforce stability and otherwise. We have continued to trend in a healthy direction, but we are continuing to pay attention to that. We're asking that our school administrators do, that our leadership team does, and that we would pay attention to that in our school environments. The recommendation for this board at this particular time is to continue to operate under Plan A for all elementary school students. That's grades kindergarten through five for the remainder of the school year. That we would continue to operate under Plan A for all middle school and high school students. That's grade six through twelve. And that we would continue to monitor workforce stability and community health. And that we would continue to monitor workforce stability and community health, and that we would continue to keep people informed. The only change in the communication, and I'll just make this note because each of you are probably well aware of it. We did our R2L weeklys. That was a phone call. It was an email. It was a text alert, all of the above, until we started operating under Plan A. Once we went to Plan A, that's now just an email notification and you can check that on our school system website. But you don't get that phone call every time now that says, hey, here's all the information that you need. That's not an effort not to communicate, but it's an effort to simply say, we, everybody knows where that communication is occurring right now. It happens every Thursday. You know where you can find that. But that one piece has changed. And so I'll pause right here for a moment as it relates to school system operations. And again, share with you as we stand to our recommendation to continue Plan A for the remainder of this school year.
I have some questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So when kids are outside doing PE, running, are they allowed to take their masks off if they're six feet away from their peers? Because I know in the toolkit, it says that they can as long as they're distanced. What I worry about is like as it gets hotter and, you know, warmer.
And the guidance is exactly that, when they are properly distanced. So students who are playing on the playground or participating in physical education are allowed to remove it when they're outside so long as they are able to maintain social distancing. When that doesn't occur though, is when they're not. And so let's, we got to think about some students on the playground and let's be very candid. There are instances in which that's not the case, right? And so there are instances in a physical education classroom when that isn't the case. And the requirement of the toolkit also says, if you can't maintain the distance, then you're required to have it on all the time on public school campuses. And so a lot of that's going to be dependent on the circumstance and the situation in that classroom environment, what kind of space they're using and what the expectations for the activity are.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just, I worry about, you know, kids with asthma or whatever. And I know playground, they just, they're all over each other. They just have to keep it on.
Yes, ma'am.
But, you know, I'm thinking about them doing, you know, physical education tests or, you know, whatever, and it being hot in the gym or, you know, what hasn't really been an issue because it's been cold. So the mask is better on, but.
You're warm right now.
Yeah.
What we know is our teachers are really doing a wonderful job, again, being attentive and creative about creating as many opportunities for students as possible. You think about when we eat outside, when you think about physical education outside, when you think about recess outside or opportunities to have class outside where you can create those mask breaks or frequency opportunities when kids are socially distanced. But what I know is the teachers also want to do the right thing and make sure that they're ensuring the safety of all students. And if they can't ensure that that's going to be the case, the face covering is required.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. What else? What other questions about school operations right now?
Do you have any data, since we've been back and we were on spring break last week, on how many more folks were positive or teachers since we went to Plan A?
Yes, sir. So on average, and Mr. Taylor can correct me if I'm wrong, but on average, we were reporting about four total cases a day under Plan A, four total cases across all school environments. And those were predominantly students. What we have seen is a significant decrease in, significant decrease in staff as it relates to positivity rates. And again, that's what we would expect and that's real positivity. But we've seen a significant decrease in the number of reported cases. Yes, sir. Is that about right, Mr. Taylor?
So we went to Plan A and we got less cases?
Well, we had vaccines.
We had vaccines, right. But right before spring break, they weren't fully vaccinated and whatever, but that's awesome.
It's awesome. And again, it's a place where I really want to applaud our school communities, our teaching staff, our parents, our students, our compliance to the safety expectations, our attention to those things. Certainly, there's been a lot of challenge associated with that. But to quote our director of the Health Department, he said, you know, the proof is in the pudding. You have demonstrated an ability to operate safely and so continue to do so. And I think we're continuing to see that.
Do you know what percentage of our staff, total staff have had their vaccines?
No, that's a hard number to pin down. We know the people that volunteered to participate through us. But what we also know, Mr. Bridges, is that there are a number of people that were eligible in different categories before educators were eligible. We also know that a number of people were able to get vaccine appointments, not necessarily in our community. Some of them out of state, some of them for other reasons. And there's no requirement that people actually report to us that they've received the vaccine at this point. But what we feel really confident about is we think that our participation rate is in excess of seventy percent. So when we look at those numbers, I wish we could give you a hard and fast, but because people don't have to tell us and they may have been eligible for an appointment in a way that wasn't through our scheduling, it's hard to pin that number down. Yes, sir.
Could you just remind me, it says guidelines for attendance stay the same. Are you talking about the same as pre-COVID or the same that we've been operating?
So those are the same attendance guidelines, and I'll speak to that in the instructional refresher right here. I appreciate that segue. So when we talk about what this means about Plan A, Plan A again is all students, grade six through 12, are attending on a regular bell schedule. Again, so they're operating that eight to three. That live remote instruction option that our teachers are demonstrating remains the same. And guidelines for attendance have remained the same. We published those guidelines back in August. And what those essentially mean are you are either in a face-to-face environment, if it's eligible to you, or you have an ability to demonstrate having been present based on two-way communication, submission of assignment. All of our teachers are operating in a Google Classroom space and so assignments are there. So attendance doesn't mean physical presence. What it means is, is that you are being accounted for in the work that's present in that period of time.
Okay, I mean, we certainly wouldn't want somebody who has any type of symptoms coming because they're nervous about attendance guidelines, so.
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate you asking for clarification there. Any other questions about Plan A or our current recommendation for operations?
Thank you.
Great, absolutely. Summary thoughts, this is a familiar slide. I'm going to say it one more time. You've seen these four bullets before, but we like to repeat things that are always present. Every one of these plans is fluid. We hope that it continues to trend in the direction that we're moving forward. But we are going to continue to stay in close partnership with our local health agencies and partners. We're going to follow the updated direction from DPI, DHHS and governing bodies. We're going to continue to meet the instructional obligation to all students every day, and that is our commitment. As it relates to end-of-year activities, I touched on this for a second when we talked about the COVID reserve funds, but I'm excited to share this slide with you because this was a slide that wasn't possible last year. If you remember this time last year when we were talking, we weren't sure what May and June were going to bring, but they certainly weren't this. And so when we think about the current restrictions as it relates to operations for end-of-year activities, the current executive order 204 says we have a fifty percent occupancy limit indoors and outdoors. You think about large gathering spaces, gymnasiums, auditoriums and stadiums. Fifty percent occupancy with no cap. Before, those indoors had a cap. So now we're looking at our posted fire code. We're looking at our seated capacity and we're able to demonstrate that. So when you think about, for, I'll use West Henderson High School as an example, their outdoor capacity for their stadium is approximately 6,000. So when you think about indoor capacity or outdoor capacity at fifty percent and you're thinking about a high school graduation, under the current guidelines, they would potentially be able to have 3,000 people attend that event safely under the current restrictions and the guidelines. What is required is bullet number two. You still have to be able to socially distance. You have to demonstrate those sanitation standards, whatever other health restrictions are in place. And bullet three, it is the most frequent question we get, right? Are face coverings still required? Yes, they are. They are still required in indoor settings and outdoor settings. So if you've attended an athletic event recently, perhaps you went to one of our football games, you see that face coverings are required. If you attended a high school basketball game or otherwise, you've seen that face coverings are required. And our end-of-year activities for both our students, our guests, their family and any visitors, those guidelines will still be in place. So I'm going to pause here for a moment. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Case?
I like it when we get letters from kids.
Yes, ma'am.
We got a letter, I think everybody did, from a senior at Hendersonville High School, and she made some good poets. And I just would like for you to talk about them. Being a senior and not even getting to have a junior year of high school, I find it heartbreaking that when everyone is able to return to school full-time with thirty-two students at most in each class wearing a mask, playing sports, being crowded hallways and staircases, we can't have a prom with less than half the student body in one place wearing masks and being just as close at prom like we would be packed in classrooms, playing on teams, being crammed into staircases or into a school bus. If we can return to school full capacity with 800 students with following safety regulations, we should be allowed to have a prom with at most 300 kids in one space following the same protocol as we do in a maxed-out capacity school of 800 students. Thank you for your time. Can you talk about the prom?
I'd be glad to. And I actually corresponded with that student directly. I appreciate when students advocate and reach out and take that opportunity. Prom, I will say, was one of the most challenging things for us to discuss and talk about because it is one of those seminal events in our students' high school experience. And when you also think about our high school seniors, and this student has articulated that beautifully, if you're a senior, you didn't have a junior prom. And now you won't have a senior prom that is sponsored or run by the school system. And there's one very specific reason for that. Under the current executive order, dancing is still prohibited. It is still not allowed. I can say unfortunately, it's probably the least socially-distanced activity that occurs, regardless of what it looks like in a hallway or otherwise. Again, we have a responsibility to adhere to those guidelines and also think about our ability to monitor and maintain them. So when we talk about the prom, given that the DHHS guidelines still do not permit it, it is not allowable under those guidelines, even at a wedding reception right now. If you were to follow the guidelines, the dancing isn't the case. We knew that to invite students to a prom where they could not dance in that setting in which they would invite would actually create more of a challenge for them to not do the things that we ask them to than to do otherwise. And so that is one of the events that's not allowable under our current end-of-year activities. What we are doing is making a tremendous commitment to ensure that as many of the end-of-year activities that students are used to actually do occur. And as I shared with that one student, if I could have granted students last year the ability to graduate in person, we would have. And I'm so grateful that this year's seniors are going to get that opportunity, that they may be able to have some of these end-of-year activities that last year's seniors didn't get. But prom has been one of the difficult ones. And as we look at those current guidelines and what the restrictions associated with it, we determined that it was in the best interest of our community and community health to follow those guidelines very closely. And as I said, I shared that with that student directly.
I know, it's hard to swallow.
Yeah. She's got great points.
Which is what we love about our students. They are.
They're smart.
They are smart and they demonstrate that, and there's nothing better than advocating for yourself and for others. And so we certainly applaud that.
And let's be honest, there's going to be some private proms that are not sponsored by Henderson County Public Schools that are going to give kids the opportunity to have prom.
We are aware of many of them. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like just about every school has one, I'd say.
On your catch percent occupancy, does that include participants?
Right now it does. Yes, sir. There was some legislation that was on the General Assembly's docket that was actually excluding participants in some respect. That occupancy was specifically related to the people that are spectators. But right now, occupancy is everybody that's in that venue. Yes, sir.
So if you have 6,000 people at West High and you can only have 3,000 in the seating, however, there will be two football teams and trainers and managers and everything, that takes away from the 3,000. You're saying 3,000 total, including participants?
So athletics is a little bit different than this current executive order. Under the High School Athletic Association guidelines, the participants are not included in that number.
Okay.
But if we're going to hold an event in that space, graduation as an example, everyone who's inside the stadium is considered in that number.
And I have heard that they're going to change that, that they're putting a bill forward that allows administrators, teachers, staff and the students to not count in that number. But that's not the case right now today.
Yes, sir.
We still would not go anywhere near that number, correct? There's 200.
It depends. It depends. I would say a traditional graduation is going to come close to that number, if not exceed it.
Oh, really?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Kids, aunts, uncles.
We'll see.
I mean, yeah, we could say you get two tickets or four tickets and that's it. Yeah.
Right. And specific to the tickets, I'll speak to that because it's a good question. The capacity at each stadium is different. And the ticket number, we're not marrying ourselves to right now and for a very specific reason. And it's the question you asked is, that's the number right now. If we told you a ticket number right now, there'd be a lot of people that would be excited or a lot of people that would be very scared. And we know that that number could change between now and then. And so we're not going to hold ourselves to that. We have some idea of what those numbers might be if the restrictions hold at fifty percent because we know what our facilities will hold. But we are, of course, going to continue to watch and pay attention to what those current guidelines are at the time.
One more thing real quick.
Yes, sir.
One thing that enables schools to get back as, you know, the CDC came out and says social distancing was now three feet instead of six feet. I don't know if that's like official or, but when it says social distancing protocols, is that six feet or three feet or are we not sure?
So specific to the current restrictions, the CDC is about a recommendation about school operations. It's not about social distancing in a public setting. So that's six feet of social distancing is still part of that recommendation. Yes, sir. Now, if that changes, we'll of course pay attention to it. But in essence, when you think about the public gathering spaces, you're talking about six feet between people who are not part of the same family group. Because what you see it like an athletic event or otherwise is, you can all sit with your family and they're bunched together, but then you want some distance between who they're sitting around.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
If there are no more questions about that, again, what does that mean for us? Just share that, that first bullet. We are planning right now. We are working to coordinate, organize and generate all the logistics around in-person events and activities within the guidelines of those restrictions, and we'll continue to follow those. Those three other bullets are the ones that you're familiar with from the summary slides. Those are the attentions to detail. Those are all fluid. If the restrictions were to shorten or lessen, then we'll attend to that. And our regular dialogue with our administrative groups are what's helping to inform that. That's where we stand right now. Those are operations. Any other questions as it relates to current school system operations or end-of-year activities?
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
My pleasure. Thank you.
All right, construction update with Carl Taylor.
Good afternoon again, board. We will begin with some slides again related to Hendersonville High School for this construction update. And so from our last update and then also from your visit last month, the bleachers have been installed there in the auxiliary gym and those bleachers are installed on both sides. I believe it's three rows of seating on both sides of that auxiliary gym. Work continues there in the parking lot and in the area going up to the student entrance with the curb and grading work as well as preparation for landscaping later on this spring. Again, here's an updated photo of the student entrance where you see the concrete work for the stairway, stairs going up to it. I know that was an area we didn't get to access very much in our tours last month, but that is an updated look from that student entrance. And then here's an overview that comes from a time-lapse video. And so this video lasts a little over a minute. The video begins with an aerial picture of the campus back on May 1st of 2020 and then runs through April 10th, so just a couple of days ago. Just give us a second to get logged in here and that video will begin. It is very cool to see that, that view of it, to see where, for several months, it looks like not a lot's happening. And then all of a sudden, I think it was about August, is where things start going up, and then it changes very quickly. And as Mr. Bridges mentioned earlier in this meeting, what an awesome facility that is going to be for our students at Hendersonville High School, as well as for our community. A couple of other projects that are getting started. At our last board meeting, I mentioned this one, the secure entry renovation there at Rugby Middle School. We had our pre-construction meeting out there on March 31st to where the construction company, the architect, and the county was there to talk about that project getting started. And so right now, it looks like next Monday, April 19th, is when that project will begin. And so I look forward to being able to share some pictures of that progress as well and the start of it at our next meeting. The target completion date that was set at that pre-construction meeting is before the next school year begins. And then the other one you may have noticed, as you've been around the central office over the last couple of weeks, is the roof replacement here on this building. Right before spring break is when the materials were delivered, which was April 1st. Work started last week while we were on spring break and will continue through this week and next week. So hopefully by the end of this month, that work will be completed. So at this time, I'll take any questions that you may have.
I have two questions, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, sir.
Parking in the new parking lot at Hendersonville High School, do you know how many spaces will be available for students and teachers or staff?
I do not know that off the top of my head, but I can find that out for you.
The second question, have you presented this to any of our civic organizations in the city and counties, such as Kiwanis or Rotary Club, or any civic organizations at all, to give them an update on the progress that's being made?
Not yet, no, sir.
Have you considered it?
Mr. Bridges, the last presentation to civic organizations was pre the start of the pandemic. Made a couple of presentations to our local Kiwanis Club, and we had some community meetings. But while those were on pause, we've not done any community presentations, but I think that's a great opportunity for us to share this information back with our community groups. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good, all right, thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
Dr. Fry, equity update?
I am excited to share this with you. I've been in this business about 28 years, and this is very likely the most exciting project that I've been a part of, just even thinking about, and it hasn't even started. So let me, let me give you a little history, and then I'll tell you what it is. So last month, as you all know, our leadership team was invited to participate in a diversity, equity, and inclusion dialogue with about two dozen members of our faith community. And at that time, one of the items we shared with them was what I'm about to share with you. And it was our goal of recruiting students of color into the teaching profession. So I am pleased to share with you some, some good news. First of all, we have been accepted to participate in a pilot program called Teaching as a Profession. This will be a series of two classes that our students can take as juniors and seniors. The, the first class is a one-credit class where they learn about the basics of becoming a teacher, elementary, middle, or high. And then the second class is one that is for two credits, and it also contains an internship component. So when they take that second-level class, we can match them up with a teacher in our school district at the level that they're most interested in teaching, and let them learn from our teachers. So this has such great potential. Just to scratch the surface, some things that we have in mind are asking our community, and we have already received great interest in this, to create incentives such as educational assistance so that when our students leave us and go on to university, universities, that they could receive tuition. But let me back up and tell you about those two classes that they get to take with us. Those receive college credit. They articulate both with Blue Ridge Community College and with our UNC university systems. That's an agreement that was made at the state level, at the Department of Public Instruction, on behalf of this program. The other piece of good news that I want to share with you, and the reason that we really were waiting on saying much about this program publicly was to make sure that the funding was going to come through. And right before spring break, we received information about the CTE planning allotments. Those are including enough months of employment for us to hire a teacher for this position so that we can begin next year. Our hopes are to begin recruiting our students, specifically our students of color, so that our staff can become more representative of the students that we teach. We are even thinking about ways that we can target professional development for these students, and also thinking about incentives that we could offer them to come back and have employment with us. And we'll be seeking legal counsel on the different options that are available to us. But I have to tell you, I feel like this could be a game changer for Henderson County Public Schools. And I know this is something that you all have been interested in for quite some time. Can you imagine if we could have put a prospective teacher in Doc Case's classroom? Imagine what a life-changing experience that is. So, so we just, we just know that this program will be a success, and can't wait to get it started.
So exciting.
Yes.
Was this announced in school?
We have not made a big announcement about this yet. We've talked about it, we've talked about it informally. I don't know.
I can't remember if my son or daughter came home yesterday or the day before talking about how all these people were interested in becoming teachers.
Okay, well, so it could be. For quite some time, we have offered students the opportunity to serve in an internship, and one of the areas was in teaching. And these are informal conversations that we've had, so they could have heard about it.
I mean, that's really cool.
Now, this is going to be in all five of our high schools.
Well, I'm not exactly sure how it will be implemented, because we just received news about the funding. And what we know is we have enough for one teacher, and we would like to give as many students an opportunity as possible with that one teacher in hopes that it will grow. So where they'll be placed, I can't say yet.
At what grade level will this course be taught?
This course will be eligible to high school juniors and seniors, yes.
So the first course maybe for juniors and the second course for seniors?
Yes, sir. Or the junior could conceivably, in a block schedule, school take both. Same with the senior, yes.
It's almost like a no, like, why haven't we thought of this? You know, we're doing the automotive, we're doing now plumbing and HVAC. I mean, we've just not, they've not heard anything good about being a teacher, you know? It's, duh, like, this is such a great thing.
Well, we needed Dr. Fry, that's awesome.
Just, yeah.
I can't take credit for this, truly. It's something that the Department of Public Instruction just made available to districts to use their career and technical education funds to support. So for the first time, yes. And, and the Department of Public Instruction also negotiated that articulation agreement with us. Win, win, win.
Yeah.
Dr. Fry, is this just open to students of color, or would it be open to all students?
We hope to have as many students involved in this as possible.
I'm glad.
Yes.
How many kids do anticipate one teacher being able to handle?
Well, if we had a class of, let's say, 20 to 25, because we certainly want them to be able to, to give adequate attention to the students who are there, then a single teacher could teach three courses each semester. So conceivably 150, yes. But that's, that's if we're just offering the one-credit class the first year. Depends on how we schedule it.
Yeah, and I think, one thing that we need to think of with, with one teacher, that when, are we going to use that teacher at different schools to?
I, in my opinion, and, and I serve at the pleasure of the superintendent, so it will be his opinion. I would, I would love to see them at at least two schools, no less than two schools.
And then we could use remote instruction, like we do in some courses.
Absolutely, Spanish.
Were those kids that were in the library at East, they were doing remote instruction for something else, right? They were sharing a teacher? Okay, yeah.
And, and Dr. Fry could speak to this better than I can, but we have VPS offerings that have offered, been offered that way for quite some time, where students did, they could actually take a course that was being taught by a teacher at a different school. Yes.
So is this a grant, or is this just in addition to?
This is not a grant. This is a part of, so we receive months of employment for all of our CTE teachers, and this is coming as a part of that. It, it's something that we don't have to worry will go away. Yes, sir, yes.
Has the curriculum been developed for this yet?
It has, it has, and it is in alignment with the curriculum that's offered in our university systems for beginning teachers. Yeah, that's why they're getting that credit.
To be fair to all four high schools, could we do it by computer, by Zoom, or whatever? Has that been thought?
Ideally, and, and we could, Ms. Case. Ideally, if we did that, then we have a teacher rotating so that at least once a week, they're having FaceTime with those students. I just, I would love to see that powerful piece and that connection.
I'd really like to see how this program works out and see how it looks next year, and then maybe in the 22, 23 budget, if, if need be, then, and we need to get to more high schools, Ms. Case, then we do so, and we pay for it. Because I think this is, this is hugely important.
I mean, we would have to essentially, right? If we're getting one position, then next year, you know, that teacher, she, he would have to teach the juniors and the seniors.
Right.
So, yeah.
This is awesome.
Oh, it's so exciting.
That was great.
The country's losing teachers.
Yes, sir.
And this is one way, of course, of recruiting possible future teachers.
Absolutely, you're right, you're right.
I think one of the key parts, what you said, is trying to keep those kids here when they go off to UNC Charlotte, or UNC Greensboro, Chapel Hill, or wherever. That's enticing to bring them back.
And I feel like a lot of that magic will occur in the internship placement and where we put those students. I think that can make all the difference.
Does it pay for transportation for those kids to be able to get to whatever elementary school if they're doing elementary education or whatnot?
This, this piece is just for the teacher's salary, yes, yes. We have historically not provided transportation funds for any of our interns or apprentices.
Well, when this thing gets started, why don't you bring that information back to us and see if that's something this board might consider doing to help those kids if they need it?
We wouldn't need to do it until second semester or next year.
Right, for the internship, right, the earliest would be second semester. But let's just see what it looks like, what type of enrollment you have. Just keep us, let us know what's going on.
I will, that will be my pleasure, yes.
Well, we're talking about awesome programs. Are we doing that internship with our industries and stuff this year?
The apprenticeship program, yes, ma'am. And that, you know, began as the manufacturing apprenticeship program, and then it morphed into including automotive and business and finance. So yes, that does continue, absolutely.
That's great.
Yeah, yes.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Mr. Scott Rhodes, childcare update? Thank you, morning.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Craver, board members. Happy to give you a childcare update for the month of March. I'll jump right in. Our financial projections for March of 2021, our revenues were $86,818, with our expenses of $68,414.2, with a operational profit of $18,406.58.
There you go, Mr. Rhodes.
We were really excited to see that in the month of March. We're starting to see some of that information we brought to you earlier, I guess, maybe in November, December, with our kids being able to come back, K through five, and then also with some of those other changes. I think that represents some of that profit for us. Also got some other good news for us. Operational grant money from DHHS. We received $54,014 in the month of March. That money's going to help us offset some of those losses that occurred earlier in the year. So that's really exciting. And we're also anticipating that there's going to be a second round, that we're going to see another $54,000 in April. So I hope that when we get an opportunity to present this again next month, that we'll be able to present another $54,014 to you as well.
So is, is that included in the $86,818, or that's additional?
No, no, that's totally separate, yeah.
Okay, that's awesome.
Yeah, and the reason, Ms. Hold, that's a really good segue. One of the things that we don't want to do is confuse the two. That grant money is not money that we would look to keep us operational for the future.
Right.
It does help offset some of those losses, which helps make us whole in some ways. So that money is very helpful. But we want to be able to look at our monthly profit or losses to be able to determine, moving forward, what this is going to look like. Which brings me to this point. We sent out RFQs, like we had discussed. We got three proposals back. Those three proposals, we're going to have vendor presentations this week, myself, Mr. Sosha, two elementary school principals. We'll be seeing those vendor presentations and being able to bring some more information back to you. We discussed being able to bring back to you as a board, recognizing that if we did see a need to do something different with our childcare program, that we need to have an exit ramp. We need to have a strategy in place to be able to do so if needed. Again, hopefully that will not be needed. But this information that we're going to be getting this week will be helpful in the process and the decision-making of this board. So we look forward to getting those presentations this week, and I'll be happy to take any questions that you might have.
What do you attribute to the $18,000 in net revenue?
Yeah, I think there's a huge difference when we got fourth and fifth back in full-time. I think that's made a big difference. And I also think making, you know, where we're running where parents have to pay by the week, I think that's also been very helpful as well.
That's made the difference, because we were having four and five back before, but we were losing money.
Well, yeah, Mr. Goff, but, you know, when we got four and five back, we only had just like a couple of weeks to kind of see what that looked like. But now that we've had everyone come back for a substantial amount of time, we've seen some of that pick up, which has been really good. But at the same time, I don't, I don't want to declare victory just yet. It's good two months, though.
Meaning even before this pandemic started, fourth and fifth were there, around to go, but we were losing money at the same time. I think operational efficiencies certainly help. And being able to know what type of staffing you need by the week and not by the day certainly is going to help the efficiency of the program.
Yes, sir.
I applaud you guys for that, and making it leaner and meaner. And like I said, I don't want to make money on this, but I don't want to, I don't want to lose money.
Without a doubt.
Any other questions?
No, but next time, can we look at like the total fund balance trend? Like, because that's, when we used to look at that, we saw the...
Where the fund balance was going?
That guy right back there in the bag. He will help me, and we will work on creating something to be able to kind of show you what that looks like.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Nice to put money into funds.
Oh, my goodness. Mr. Bernie Sosha, financial statements, please.
See, I came back.
I knew you would.
Two financial reports for you today. The first one is for our local funds, the two of them, the local current expense and other restricted funds. Our revenues total for the year, $27.3 million, and expenditures are just shy of $19 million for the year. And we've done things a bit differently. You see the big gap in there. We've really focused on using all of our state funds. We've really focused on using all of our state funds at the beginning of the year, um, this year because we really, that's such unpredictability with everything. So we have focused on the state funds. We have used up several pots of those dollars and now we are going to be shifting those into local. So you'll see a, an uptick in our, um, local, but we are looking very good, as you can tell, um, on the local side. And, um, the other report is for the capital outlay fund. We have received 1.7 million dollars and we have spent just shy of 1 million dollars on our projects. The balance, as you can see in the report, sitting there at that 400,000 dollars that we were just talking about earlier today. Um, the roof over our heads right now, glad it's sunny, and a couple of other, um, roofing and paving projects as well as we have to report, record the bus lease transaction, um, on our books. So that shows up as revenue and expense, even though we don't see a dime.
Yeah. Sweet.
But I'll answer any questions.
That's good stuff.
All right.
I like what you guys bring. It's good news. It's awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Unless, does anybody have questions for Bernie? Good to go. All right. General operations, Dr. Bryant?
Thank you, Mr. Craver. Just a couple of reminders as it relates to the schedule upcoming. Uh, more specifically, Wednesday of this week, we will be joined together again. We'll start promptly at noon right here in the boardroom. We'll go for about two hours and it is the initial board budget workshop. We'll share with you presentations and recommendations for local current expense, our capital outlay, uh, as well as, uh, the budgets moving forward. There'll be an opportunity for us to receive feedback, to have dialogue and discussion, and then move forward with our budget workshop before that has to be presented in final to the Board of Commissioners in May. Uh, that would remind you that the Henderson County Education Foundation will be inducting some folks into the Hall of Fame. It is a virtual celebration. Uh, April 28th, we'll be sharing the links for that a little bit later. You'll see the date again for the workshop later this month. I talked about it earlier today, but our top scholar recognitions will occur at each high school. We'll be sharing with you all as board members. You're invited to join us. Each member of the leadership team's been assigned a school location. Each member of the board has been done the same. We'll share that with you on Wednesday when we join together at the budget workshops. And high school graduations are planned for May the 28th. That's when they plan. That is the final day of the student school year. That's when we intend to wrap up, the Friday before Memorial Day. So we look forward to celebrating our high school seniors on that day. Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm just, you know, my back's hurting. I'm a little tired, so I'm going to be a little, you know, whatever. I'm about done with the virtual stuff. Is there any way that we can hold any of this stuff, like in a place where we can take 50% capacity? I mean, to hold it any, I mean, here, we, we have a meeting with a room full of, well, I don't know, 15 people. But how many people could we have in here? Could we have, I mean, I know not now, you don't have enough planning time, but like a Hall of Fame virtual celebration? I mean, can we do any of that in person at a place with its 50% capacity? You know what I'm saying?
I hear you. That's not us. That's the Henderson County Education.
I know. I'm just saying, any, but anything that we do, anything, anything that anybody does, let's try to.
Our, our current plan, budget workshop, board meetings, our top scholars, our graduations, our Teacher of the Year luncheon, all those are planned as in-person events.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I'm just, I don't know.
Zoomed out.
I told you, I'm, I'm about done. It's about 5:30.
All right. That's all you got?
Yes, sir.
If there's no other questions, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Thank you. All those, say aye.
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 We are adjourned.